Ready?
Bless you, bless you. I didn't. If we could just get Steve to get in his seat. I'm just looking at him, she's like... No, you're not doing it. I think so for now, yeah. Well, I'll ask if anybody can hear. Okay, we'll call the July 27th, 2022 Commissioners Meeting to Order. If you'd stand for the pledge and a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay. Is there a problem? Oh, okay. Commissioner Tarantino is on vacation this week and in his home state of New Jersey, so it'll just be Steve and I tonight.
Pray for New Jersey.
No kidding. Have the Commissioners had any opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting? Have you, yeah, no, he's not. He has not.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
And I will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Same thing with claims.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I will second that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. And payroll.
Make a motion to accept payroll as presented.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. We have reports from Waits and Measures, the Treasurers Monthly Report, and the Clerk's Monthly Report. Do I have a motion to accept these reports as presented?
So moved.
And I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Penny.
Good evening. I just have a quick report. Three things I want to mention. This fall, we will be working on another EPA grant. We'll be meeting with our grant consultant. You know, we got turned, we had several and we got turned down, and so we're going to re-up the application and tweak it a little bit. They continue to focus on minorities, but they have $500 million to give away. And so our grant consultant said even though we don't have a lot of minorities, we still need to try to pick a focus of how we can be creative. So that will be in the fall. There's no application, there's no deadlines. There's not anything really written down about it yet, but in the fall, we will hear more, so I wanted to make you aware of that. You know, it'll require some, you know, an approval from you from the minutes to apply. So that's one thing. Second thing, oh, we're still working on Make My Move. We're in the beginning stages of gathering key stakeholders, again, for the second time with a little smaller group, and that is forthcoming. I think it's the 8th of August, and you know, we've invited one of the Commissioners to attend. We'll have a luncheon, and there's going to be about six or eight people. Somebody from the hospital, somebody from the city, somebody from county, and a few other people that are kind of key to the program. And so just wanted to remind you of that. It's still rolling along. The last thing that Corey wanted me to remind you of is, at our August Board meeting, we're having a gown named Courtney Zog. This year's focus for us is entrepreneurship and small business growth, creating a healthy business environment. So anyway, it's a, it's an, it's interesting to listen to her because she kind of helps you understand how an entrepreneur thinks. She is an entrepreneur. And so we just want to, I mean, of course, we invite you to come, but this is a really going to be a good meeting where you'll understand more about where we're going with a survey and how, how it, how it takes a lot of people at the table to make sure that we're able to successfully go after entrepreneurs and, and build that environment. So just wanted to remind you of that. That's our August Board meeting. And do you have any questions about anything?
Nope, I don't.
Okay.
Was that, I did do a survey that I got from Corey. Was that part of?
Yes, and that, that was it, but it's a, she'll discuss more how we gather the results and use them. And then that will be even rolled out on a bigger basis. We just rolled it out to a small group, like our, our peers and people we work with, just for her to get a flavor for how people were responding, but it will be rolled out again, is my understanding.
Okay.
Alrighty?
Yep, alright.
Thank you.
Sean does not hear. Scott, do you have any updates?
Nothing much new. One thing I want to say is Matt Martin, the new Hall of Fame leader, will be having a discussion at the library on October, nope, that's wrong, August 11th. August 11th. So we, we've had good attendance at those. We've had one every month, some sort of history of Henry County. The last one was on the Hoosier Gym. It'd be great to have a good turnout to see, he can discuss the beginnings of the Hall of Fame and how it all came here and important things like that. We're still on course for the golf tournament, September 24th. We'll have discussions with the high school about tying it to the Fieldhouse Tournament, which is, is every year, and maybe making a bigger event based on that and be raised money for both our 529 efforts and the Fieldhouse. And the last thing is, that hasn't been done yet, is the safe, which may become the time capsule, which you've all been talking about. And we've had some thoughts of maybe it, it worked well last time, maybe tie that to a cruise-in event. Have at the same time, maybe one of the last cruise-in events.
Because there's a lot of people down here.
Yep, people are already here. It'd be a good tie-in to show some of the things that are going in and have a few people speak and sort of wrap up that part of it, so.
Has the decision been made to use the safe or not? And I've made this statement, whether the Vicentino Committee uses it or not, it needed to be brought out into the public view, so there's no pressure to use it. I just didn't.
It, it seems like a nice idea to keep it in better condition, obviously, than putting it in the ground.
But that, that's a you guys' decision, not a, not us, but it does look pretty down there.
Yeah, I just took some more pictures of it. It's nice, nice looking.
It is nice.
That's it.
What time is the?
The talk at the library?
At the library?
The library is at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
We've had nice turnouts for some of those. We've had as many as 40 people, so it'd be a, a nice way to remember how that Hall of Fame came here and how important it is to Newcastle and Henry County. So that's it.
Alright. Thank you. Are you guys, you guys looking down, ready for it to start winding down?
Yeah.
Okay, Angela's not here, Stacy's not here. Joe, do you have anything? I'm guessing that's this.
Good evening. The only thing I have this evening is a proposed agreement from Butler, Fairman, and Seifert to do some industrial stormwater permitting, status review, implementation, compliance, and management. In other words, we, we're, I think we're behind on compliance with IDAM. We need to get in compliance. There's sampling that needs to be done. The sampling, the, the questions we have are, are, what do we sample in? When do we sample it? Where do we send it? And there's some other things. We got to have inspections every so often, like quarterly, and she's going to come in and do training, alright, and tell us, give us some of these answers, and she's going to train everyone, plus she's going to train certain individuals about what we have to do to, to be in compliance and stay in compliance. The total contract amount, and includes the notice of intent, SWP3 checklist, and, monitoring, and employee training, BNP, and annual report, there's an annual report we have to put in too. It's $13,650. They put in 2,500 for on-call services. I hope not to, you have to use that, but Joel has reviewed the agreement, so.
And what did you say that they would, service they would be providing for what? I, I didn't kick the very beginning of your statement, what they're for? What are, what are we not in, potentially not in compliance with?
Well, we're behi, I think we're behind.
For?
For stormwater, there was a...
Stormwater, okay, I didn't hear the stormwater.
Stormwater permitting.
Okay.
I was told there was a spill somewhere, somehow, some years back, and since, since the spill happened, then the highway has to do this sampling and submittals to IDAM to make sure that we are in compli, I mean, we've got salts sitting there and other things. They want to make sure that we're in compliance.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Joel, you've reviewed the contract. You don't have any, any problems with that? And I'm assuming, Joe, that this comes out of one of your funds?
Yes.
I think it does. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this agreement as presented?
So moved.
Second, I just lost the word, sorry. Motion by Steve, yeah, sorry. Motion by Steve, second by myself, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Sorry. Steve Rust?
Me too.
Oh, I thought I saw Steve come in. Did he not come in? I'll move, I'll move on in case, okay, I'll move on from him and Casey. Tom, you have anything? Sheriff McCorkle?
Yes. Yep, that is in the ARP resolution here, here in a second. And while, I was going to do this at the end, but while we're on you. So last Friday, we had an issue with our fire alarm protection in the Masonic Building, and Sheriff McCorkle, Landon Dean, and worked with Steve and I, and they provided a reserve deputy who volunteered, her name is Leisha, Leisha, Leisha Thacker. She came here at 7 o'clock on a Friday night and stayed till, or Thursday night, it was Thursday, excuse me, Thursday night, and stayed till 7 o'clock Friday morning doing fire walk watches in the building, since we didn't have fire alarm protection in that building. So I want to thank Sheriff McCorkle, Landon Dean, and especially Officer Thacker for spending 12 hours in a building doing walks just to make sure that it wasn't on fire. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Steve, do you have anything? Debbie? Jenny's not here. Casey? Nothing from the park. Treasure's not here. Okay, we will move on to memorandum of understanding. So we have a memorandum of understanding between the Newcastle Career Center and the Board of Commissioners of Henry County. Don, do you want to talk anything about this, or do you just want me to go through the memorandum of understanding? Okay. The memorandum of understanding is entered into by and between the Newcastle Career Center, a cooperative of public school corporations, and the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, whereas the NCCC wishes to conduct classroom instruction in its criminal justice program in the Henry County Emergency Management Classroom, located in building commonly known as 216 South 12th Street, Newcastle, Indiana, and whereas HCC is willing to allow NCCC to conduct instruction in the classroom on, on recurring basis, see how much I mess those letters up. Whereas NCCC and HCC wish to memorialize their understanding regarding the use of the classroom by NCCC, now therefore be it understood, obligations of HCC, Henry County Commissioners, shall be responsible for the following. HCC shall ensure that the classroom is available for the exclusive use of the Newcastle Career Center on the dates and times Newcastle Career Center provides Henry County, provides to Henry County Commissioners, it's easier for me to say the words. Newcastle Career Center shall provide Henry County Commissioners with the dates and times of each semester in which Newcastle Career Center wishes to utilize the classroom, which I believe you sent that today. Okay. Henry County Commissioners will promptly notify Newcastle Career Center if the classroom is unavailable on any of the requested dates, and will use reasonable efforts to provide alternative dates and times as close to the requested dates and times as possible. Henry County Commissioners shall cause to be supplied heat, air conditioning, lighting, ventilation to the classroom, and shall provide maintenance and janitorial service to the classroom and the building consistent with its standard practices. Henry County Commissioners may utilize the classrooms at all times when it is not in use by the Newcastle Career Center, provided that any use by Henry County Commissioners shall be concluded no later than 10 minutes prior to the starting time of Newcastle Career Center's scheduled use. Notwithstanding anything herein, Newcastle Career Center shall not have use of the classroom on any date during which county offices are closed due to inclement weather, the classroom or building are inaccessible or unsafe due to the need of unforeseen repair or casualty, or if emergent circumstances require the need for the classroom by Henry County Commissioners or other emergency service agencies. Henry County Commissioners will provide the Newcastle Career Center notice of unavailability of the classroom as soon as reasonably possible. Obligations of the Newcastle Career Center. Newcastle Career Center shall monitor the enrollment capacity of the criminal justice program to ensure that the classroom has adequate, adequate space for instruction. Newcastle Career Center shall collect and retain any fees or charges for participation in the criminal justice program. Newcastle Career Center will notify Henry County Commissioners as soon as reasonably possible of any event or occurrence that will result in Newcastle Career Center not utilizing the classroom on a previously scheduled date. Newcastle Career Center personnel shall maintain adequate supervision and disciplinary control over students utilizing classroom and participating in the criminal justice program. Newcastle Career Center shall, shall ensure that the classroom is in a clean and orderly condition at the conclusion of each day that it is utilized by the Newcastle Career Center, and that all trash and debris are placed in trashcans or other receptacles. Newcastle Career Center shall ensure that students do not enter offices or other rooms within the building, other than the classroom or publicly accessible restrooms. Newcastle Career Center shall maintain throughout the term of this agreement one or more policies of insurance that provide the following coverages. One, broad-form commercial general liability insurance, including coverage for sexual misconduct; and two, personal commercial automobile liability insurance, including as appropriate, owned, hired, and borrowed auto coverages. All notice required under this MOU shall be provided as follows. The Board of Henry County Commissioners, myself, President of the Board of Commissioners at 101 South Main Street, and Newcastle Career Center McKenzie Jackson, Director of Newcastle Career Center, 801 Parkview Drive, Newcastle. This MOU may be terminated by either party upon written notice at least 60 days prior to the conclusion of the fall or spring semester of Newcastle Career Center's school calendar. Upon termination, all rights, duties, and obligation under this MOU shall be extinguished, provided, however, that termination of this MOU shall not relieve any party, person, entity, or insurer of the obligation to identify, defend, or hold harmless any party to this MOU, or the employee, agent, or representative of a party to this MOU based upon an act, omission, or occurrence arising from or related to this MOU, or the activities, obligations, and duties described in this MOU. This MOU may be amended by the parties from time to time. Any amendment of this MOU must be evidenced by a written instrument executed by the parties heretofore. Any purported amendment or modification which is not evidenced by a written instrument executed by all parties heretofore, after obtaining all necessary approvals, shall be void. This MOU establishes the basis for entering into separate written agreements for those items or scenarios, as may be necessary or desirable from time to time, to effectuate any terms or conditions of this MOU. In witness hereof, each party through their authorized representatives enter into this MOU, the parties have read and understood the foregoing terms of this MOU by their respective signatures dated below to agree to the terms and conditions herein. So we will be, they will be having criminal justice classes in that building, and we wanted to do some sort of memorandum of understanding so that sometime in the future, people may not question why it was done this way. So do I have a motion to accept this memorandum of understanding as presented?
I wanted you to read it again.
Okay. Do you want me to do it with the NCCC and the HCC? Yeah, and my, you can hear my whistle?
Make a motion to accept.
I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Butch?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was feeling a little guilty about coming tonight, but since Corey didn't show up and Penny was in his place, shorter little session with that part, so I feel okay. I can stand up here and talk for a while.
You can.
So. Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Start waving at me when I get there. And, and I'm probably, I'm, hopefully, I'm good with five minutes.
You don't have to read the whole thing like Bobby does, if you want.
To start with, I want, I sort of want to explain and lay some groundwork for what this is about. I know I sent you the staffing, staffing analysis. For the last couple of years, I've been telling the 911 board that I'm understaffed, and, and they, they know that, and of course, I'm, I'm talking to you knowing that understaffing has to do with funding, and you guys don't do funding, and I understand that, but wanted you to have a basic understanding of why, and, and maybe, I've got a couple of ideas of what we might be able to do that I can bring to the council, and hopefully they'll, they'll listen to me. But anyway, a little history, prior to 1991, Henry County, Newcastle, and a little bit of Henry Township had 911. It was an enhanced 911. They could just dial 911, and it would go directly to the Newcastle Police Department, but you had no idea who was calling, where they were calling from. So enhanced 911 had come out prior to 1991, and we started working on trying to get enhanced 911 throughout the whole county. Now, we spent three years doing that, and when I say three years doing it, we went to Everfair and anything that any township had, we went there. They loaned us the equipment so we could show the public, because there was going to be a charge to the public on their phone bill. So the idea was to get everybody online, onboard with what was going on, so that they could see the benefit of 83 cents a month on their phone bill. And when we had the hearings and did the ordinance, it passed, nobody coming opposed it. So that was the three-year process that we went through to get to that point. In 91, prior to, prior to 91, September of 91, the Newcastle Police Department had a dispatcher, the Henry County Sheriff's Department at the jail had a dispatcher, Newcastle Fire Department had a dispatcher, Knightstown had a dispatcher, Middletown had a dispatcher. So you had all those entities taking care of their, their areas. When we got the enhanced 911 in place and ready to go operate, that was an easier battle than the battle of trying to get the city and the county to agree to do a central dispatch and put the city dispatchers, all, both of them, and the county dispatch all in one place, which we got that done, and took place. Initially, the dispatch center was at the Newcastle Police Department, and we started off with basically two dispatchers. We had two dispatch points, we had two dispatchers. Today, we have four dispatch points, and I have two dispatchers per shift. And, and I'll go through some figures here in a couple of minutes that will show you the difference between the caseload or workload at this point in time. But, but that's basically how enhanced 911 and the central dispatch come together. Recently, 2017, Knightstown gave up their dispatch, and we dispatched for them too. So, but we still just have two dispatchers. With that being said, that's sort of the overview of what, what our dispatch is and has been. There's a couple of different dispatch. One is a call taker and dispatcher. Some agencies have that. They have the person that does nothing but take calls, stays on the phone with the people, electronically sends the information to the dispatcher, the dispatcher dispatches it. And that's great if you've got the manpower. The other one is the, the caller takes the call, the caller dispatches, tries to keep the caller on the phone, bounces back and forth between that, and in our case, if there's two things going on and another phone rings, they're trying to juggle that also. Our dispatchers take the call and dispatch. Recently, the, the four people that I've had leave our dispatch center to go to other dispatch centers in surrounding counties, because they pay more, they also have a, I guess probably a less workload, because the dispatcher in Muncie, when you come in, you're either a fire dispatcher, an EMS dispatcher, or a police dispatcher, or you're a call taker. You don't have to juggle all that. Same way with Hancock County. You, you're basically siloed into one of those. You're all in the same room, and you're all dispatching, just like we do downstairs, but you're sort of in, you just have, your responsibilities are less for a given day. So that's sort of the difference there. I had a conversation the other day with a couple of elected officials about the staffing and why I was losing. Everybody that left me is still with me part-time. They left, not because I was a bad supervisor or boss, but they wanted better money, and they wanted better conditions. And, and I explained to them that money's great, and we'll take all the money anybody wants to throw at us, and I realize there's not a lot of money for them to throw anywhere, but working environment's another thing. When you have two dispatchers, which I had yesterday, and they were busier than all get out, and as one of them told me today, that they were about an hour and a half into their day, and they'd been so busy that they couldn't go to the bathroom. So they were there about another 45 minutes before it slowed down enough that one of them could leave the room. Now, when they leave the room, they just go to right there, because there's a bathroom there, there's a kitchen out there, but they're not leaving the facility. And when they go into the restroom, they have their headset on, they can still talk and listen, and even write on a piece of paper, or whatever, toilet paper, whatever they want to do. So it's still not good working conditions. I think that has a lot to do with the morale of my employees. Not just money, but the working condition. Training, just so you understand... Training, just so you understand, state law passed this year that requires all dispatchers to have a minimum mandate training. There's the actual telecommunications officer, fire training, law enforcement training, EMS training. Each one of those courses are forty hours. So, and all my dispatchers are required, as of starting this year, July, to have that. Plus, they have to have twenty-four hours of in-service of something that we have to generate for them. So, I've got all, I've got five people right now, part-time and full-time, that have not completed every one of those. We were ahead of the game, because we'd seen that coming, knew it was coming. So, I've been having my people go through that training, and they're trained up. I'll have the rest of the five of them done by the end of this year, so come next year, we will meet the state standards with no problem. Law enforcement agencies, on page six of the pamphlet that I sent you, which is the staffing analysis, we have a total of thirty-eight agencies that we dispatched for. There's ten law, seventeen fire, four EMS, and there's seven other, such as the coroner and EMA. If they call in, you know, we'll relay stuff and do things for them, different things like that. So, thirty-eight agencies, that's probably not a whole lot more than we did back in ninety-one, or maybe a few more, but the call volume has changed, obviously. The 911, on that same page, the 911 call volume is, just the 911 calls for 2021 is twenty-two thousand, over twenty-two thousand. Thirty-seven hundred administrative lines answered, and there's some additional things, inbound, outbound calls totaling seventy-nine thousand, over seventy-nine thousand calls in that given year. At the same time, our CAD, computer-aided dispatch, generates incident numbers for police, fire, and EMS. And as you can see, 2020, on the same page, we had twenty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty generated reports that dispatchers generate. In 2021, we had thirty-three thousand fifty-two reports that they've generated. So, there's an increase in calls, and there's an increase in workload. Push-to-talk, what that means is every time an officer, or a fireman, or an EMS person presses the radio and calls in, and then we respond back, that's a push-to-talk. Those figures come from IPSEC, the state radio, state police. They track all those push-to-talks, and as you can see, in 2021, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand plus push-to-talks. Six months into this year, we got a hundred-and-fifty-two. So, that number, if it keeps up, is going to be well over and past the two-thirty-two. Again, just to show you that we're continuing to have a bigger caseload. IDAX is another issue, and it's one of those non-emergency things that we can sort of put off to the side sometimes, but it still takes a lot of time. You have, you can see the inputs and the outputs, and the totals. So, keep in mind, if there's a theft, somebody steals something in Middletown, or not Middletown, yeah, in Middletown, in Nice Town, in Newcastle, the Sheriff's Department, those stolen items get put in by dispatch. Officer has to take the report, fill out the forms, then dispatch has to put them in. A warrant, and there's a section in there on warrants now here, a warrant to put one warrant in takes thirty to forty-five minutes, if they're uninterrupted. There's a list there of un-emergency service type details that they do do, and some of them they have to do. There's no doubt about that. I guess the bottom line, getting to the end of this, the summary that we got back from the company that we hired, and it's sort of interesting, his is a little bit different to mine. Prior to him starting the audit, I had written on a piece of paper, didn't tell him, a piece of paper, what I figured the total number was going to be. Well, the total number that I thought it would be, in a little different scenario, is the total number he'd come up with. And as you can see, the summary, it's on the very first page, he calls for two additional full-time officers just to cover the current two-position staffing. And I'll talk about that here in a second. But he also calls for, if we're going to do a third position, to do a third position during the high-traffic times, which is between eight and, or ten in the morning and eight in the evening, and that would take additional, three full-time people. Plus, he put in a full-time assistant to the director. Now, that's where our numbers may differ a little bit. The two additional, just to maintain, has to do with the fact that for every officer that I have, they get vacation and holiday pay, they get sick time or personal time, and when you add all that up, I'm short for each person a hundred-and-forty-one hours a year that needs to be covered. I need to cover a hundred-and-forty-one hours a year.
Per person.
Per person. And I need, if I just have two people, then I need two people setting at that. So, when you add that up, that's why my overtime is the way it is. I could probably eliminate a lot of my overtime. I try to use part-time as much as possible. Part-time, problem with the part-time is every one of my part-time people have a full-time job, and they're limited on when they can work. Some of them can only come in after five and need to get off at eleven. Some of them can come in at seven in the morning, but they need to go home at eleven. So, I plug them in where I can, use them where I can, but I got nobody that can come in and work a regular shift, because they all have, they all have full-time jobs. So, there's a section in there that talks about the staffing and the hours and how it breaks it down. I think it's pretty interesting. But I, again, I'm bringing this to you so you have a basic understanding of why. The Board and myself done the staffing analysis. I would like to see and hope that in the near future, that we can make some kind of adjustment. I mean, I hate to say this, I'd be happy with just one full-time person additional, but, you know, two would be great, five would be super, but I don't think that's going to happen, and I understand that. So, but if there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Or if you want to digest that, and you've got any questions in the future, give me a call.
Thank you, Butch. I was in the center a couple of weeks ago. They're busy.
Yeah, they are.
And I actually said, I would love to volunteer, but because I'm an elected official, I can't do that. I would, I would go through the training just to volunteer and give people a break, but, yeah, we need to do something. I mean, it's impressive, and they do a wonderful job. I was very impressed, but we need, we need to come up with something.
You've seen that there's five screens, computer screens they're sitting in front of, some of them are touchscreens.
Oh, yeah.
And they have to run all them, they have to keep all their agencies in the right place. Sometimes they glitch and get somebody out, you know, across the street, and it's somebody else's area, so we hear about it, and then we correct it.
Right.
But the training for one dispatcher before we can turn them loose as a second seat is twelve weeks. Takes twelve weeks of training. And then, even when we do that, sometimes I still slide a third person in, a part-time person in there to help, because it's, lives are at stake out there.
Well, yeah, it's got to be, you know, I can't imagine the first time somebody takes their first actual 911 call. I mean, I'd be, it's pretty nerve-wracking, I would imagine.
When you're on that 911 call, and you're talking to the person, had one just before I left and come over here, the lady was hysterical, she was upset, her son was having a seizure, seizure, and, you know, it was just, you know, and the dispatcher got the medics, while she was still rambling, got the medic started, but the phone started ringing, so the other one had that phone. She went back, and she was trying to keep that lady calm, trying to give her some advice on what to do with the person, and he was still, you know, flouting around and stuff. So, two more phone calls come in, so it's just one of the things where they just have to juggle, and, but you don't want to say, hey, lady, sorry, and hang up on her either. So, they got to, they got to be able to manage all that, so.
Yeah, yeah. They do impressive work.
That's the report, and that's the basics.
You're taking this to the council tomorrow?
Take it to council tomorrow. Like I said, I've got a, I've got a suggestion if they'd let me do it, which is, I got seventy thou, right now, I got seventy thousand dollars currently in my overtime, and I had extra put in because I was losing people, and I knew I'd have to use it, have the coverage. Well, if I get that curve at this point in time, maybe by the end of the year, I might have fifty or so thousand dollars that will go back into the 911 fund that I can then pull back out. Sixty-one thousand dollars covers one dispatcher and all the benefits. So, I mean, their pay's not sixty-one thousand, their pay's thirty-six or thirty-seven thousand dollars or so. But, you know, that might give me the edge, if everybody will let me do that, to put on another one without dipping into the county's money, when the county doesn't have any, and I know that.
Is there any ongoing, like, grant funding that would help sustain some of that?
You're not going to want to hear this. There's only one funding right now that will fix our problem.
I know exactly what it is.
That's the 911 tax fund, just like the jail fund. And I had somebody yesterday telling me, naming some other counties that were close to our size, and that their tax rate's not as high as ours, and all this stuff. So, I called them today. They may be doing great. They all three have the 911 tax fund. I hate to say that. Nobody likes taxes, I understand that, because I'll have to pay it too, but that's the only thing that's going to dig us out of that hole. If you were here when the financial company for...
Baker Tilling?
Yeah, yeah. They talked, and they said, the 911 state funds are decreasing, not just here, but across the state of Indiana. Two more years, it's going to be gone. Not gone, but it's going to be so low that we won't be able to function. So, that answers your question, but it doesn't answer your question. There's no good answer.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Butch. Okay. So, we have, so we received the annual maintenance agreement for the audio and live streaming equipment from BIS Digital in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. I believe that we have used them one time in the past seven months, maybe, maybe one phone call. So, I called and asked if we could get on a, if they had the telephone support or onsite support on an as-needed basis. So, if we went to telephone support, it's a minimum of one hour, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per hour, Monday through Friday, eight to five, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars per hour, Monday through Friday, five to eight, and then three-fifty on weekends and holidays, which we would never need, I won't say never, but I don't anticipate us needing that, considering we don't call them very often. So, we have the choice to make between renewing this contract in September for fifty-eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, or going to an as-needed basis for this system. I suggest we go to an as-needed basis.
I'll say, I'm not very impressed with them, period.
I know.
So, I'd assume not use them at all, but...
Well, we don't, we've called them once. I think last year, we may have called about two or three times, getting the live stream working, but we have, I think, called once this year.
Well, I definitely don't want to pay the amount for the contract, so I would say that as needed per hour would probably be beneficial to us.
You making that as a motion?
Yes, I'll make that as a motion.
All right. I will second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero for us to not renew the BIS Digital maintenance agreement. Okay, next up is BZA appointment. We have two people who sent in interest. One is Darren Jacobs, and the other one is John L. Carnes. Each of the commissioners received both copies of their interest letter and background. Do I have a motion on any one of these?
You're not waiting for Ed to...
No, I'm not waiting for Ed to say anything.
I'll make a motion, we appoint John Carnes.
I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. And then, we have an appointment for EMA. We had several people apply for this. Some applied after the deadline. We sent everybody that applied through indeed. We did, I don't know, we probably had four or five, I think, five. We sent everything to Heath Hudnut, who is the president of the EMA Council, for lack of a better word. He talked to everybody and was able to, some people decided not to return phone calls, or they decided this was not for them. So, he has recommended two. One is Gordon Miller from Nice Town, and the other one is Tim Welch from the, from New, Tim, you live in Newcastle? Yes, lives in Newcastle. So, and again, the commissioners were handed each one of these individuals their letters and their backgrounds and references. So, do I have... Ed's not here.
I just wanted you to finish the sentence.
Oh, yeah, do I, do I have?
I don't know, do you?
I don't know, do I? Do I have a suggestion or a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Tim Welch.
I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. And ARC, is that not on here? We must have, did I skip over that one? But we do have it. This is the Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two oh seven, twenty-seven zero sixteen. This is amending the ARC resolution. Added a couple of things. Again, I don't have to read the resolution, thank goodness. So, the ARC Committee recommended to the commissioners two additional items, the sum of up to a hundred and ten thousand for the creation of a fund to support and administer a workforce retention and recruitment program, as described in Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash twenty-nine point five dash one, in cooperation with the City of Newcastle. And then, the sum of up to sixty thousand dollars for the purchase of one or more, I'll get back to you, Rick, I forgot to read your part, one or more vehicles for use by the Henry County Building Inspector and the Henry County Weights and Measures Inspector. Both of their vehicles are on their last leg. And then, we, it was modified, number four, ten thousand dollars to provide hiring bonuses for new employees accepting employment as jail officers at the Henry County Jail and Rehabilitation Center after such facility is opened, or for new employees hired as deputy sheriffs. This was amended because we did not realize that when they hire jail staff, they don't hire straight to full-time. Everybody starts out part-time and then goes to full-time. So, the way it was worded was not going to work. So, we have modified that one, and is that acceptable, Rick? The way I read that, to cover what you need? And then, the Penny left, the make-my-move, and the sixty thousand dollars for two new Do I have a motion to accept that as presented?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Does anybody have anything else? Welcome, Tim. Congratulations. Steve, I asked you if you had anything right when you walked back in the room. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Ed's not here.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, guys. Let me get my tape off.